Okay, and you said Amy's on?
Amy's on, yeah.
Oh, great, alright. I would like to call the school district board to order at 6:30 PM on this Monday, May 6, 2024.
No matter what I do.
Alright, so we will start.
Okay.
We'll start off with any changes or additions to the agenda, and Jen, I know that you had one that you wanted to throw on here about the .5?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that would be under discussion, correct?
I think so.
Okay, um, let's, let's see, let's put that at the end, let's put that right after Mary, actually, because I don't want it to delay. Mary didn't talk, so we'll put that as our new C.
Hmm.
So that's going to be C, and then D will be childcare tax, and E will be out of the country children. Alright, any other changes or additions to the agenda? Alright, hearing none, we are going to move on to item three, which is approval of the minutes from April 8th, 2024. And let me take a quick peek here. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from April 8th, 2024?
Some.
Second.
Alright, thank you. Any discussion?
The usual wonderful job.
Yeah, they look great. Okay, hearing none, I will take a vote, starting with Megan.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Amy?
She answered.
It's on, and I am an I as well, so the motion passes, and the minutes are approved. Excuse me. Get that all blurred up here.
And Elizabeth can't, isn't here? She's going, she might be able to get it late.
Alright, oh, that's the wrong folder. There we go. Alright, we are on to item four, which is public comment on non-agenda items or announcements, and I'm just going to read my little public comment spiel before we get going to that. I'm making it very slow today, so my apologies. Here we go. A public comment is not legally required, but we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns over issues. Through these meetings, our board's modeled for our students how to conduct public discourse, and that the board members, uh, board and members of our community can approach controversial issues in a civil and constructive manner, and can demonstrate mutual respect. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed for discussion. Please start by identifying yourself and what town you reside in, and limit your remarks to three minutes. So with that, is there any public comment or announcement?
I have to say that the spring concert was a usual rounding success, and it will be very difficult to fill those shoes.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And the play at Windsor was, oh my god, so.
Yes, yeah, I was able to attend both of those as well, and I, I can't really add any more than that, they were fantastic, and I, that is going to be big shoes to fill, the music program here at ABS. And all the students did such a wonderful job on, on both counts, it was really, really wonderful. Uh, any other announcements or comments on non-agenda items? Alright, hearing none, we will move on to item five, which is our administrative report, so take away administrators.
Want me to share?
Um, yeah, I haven't opened my mic yet, if I'm going to get feedback. You want me to start?
Uh, sure, go ahead, I think the first couple of sentences are going to be a yes. Yeah, go for it.
Here it comes. So here we go, play rock and roll. Oops. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the big ideas. One question you guys have asked is what's up with our high school students, where are they going? Another one is, what's the integration between Windsor and Albert Bridge School, how are we in that process? And then the other big one was intra-district choice, so we'll talk about those things. Right, first one on our list is going to be intra-district choice, so that is the capacity that the board supported of people within the Mount Scotty School District, for children in grades K through six, to choose which of the two schools might be a better fit for their kids, if they happen to have a preference that doesn't fit the, the mold. So here is where we are currently. We have in kindergarten, two kids are at Albert Bridge for intra-district, one kid in first grade, four in second, one of, the asterisk is that one of the students who participated and they chose to come here, had to leave because they couldn't deal with the transportation.
Ah.
So there's no transportation going from Windsor to Albert Bridge, there's transportation going the other direction. Um, nobody in third, one in fourth, in fifth grade, there are two at Albert Bridge, and one at Windsor, and the one at Windsor was actually one of the impetus for why we talked about doing this in the first place, because a small school is not always a good fit for some kids, particularly in that small class. Um, and then sixth grade has one. So technically, the one at Windsor didn't fill out the form, we just all agreed ahead of time. Um, and so far, projected for next year, what we have are two incoming K at Albert Bridge, and one third grade possibly at Windsor, it sounds like. So some good options there. And then, what's happening is at Albert Bridge over the last month, certainly the concert, um, is a highlight, it's one of those moments where we see every child come together and do some hard things for some of them. Um, we also had to give our goodbyes to Mr. Hubner, who, just want to do a huge shout out, what an incredible job he has done. When you think about sharing your voice, when you're in kindergarten, like, every kid wants to share their voice, by the time you're in fourth, fifth, sixth grade, often kids start to get more and more reserved. He has done a remarkable job helping them get their voice out there, and so even our, um, combi out of the changing voices of the males at this age, they're sticking it out there, they're singing, and you could hear them. So there was harmony, there was multiple parts, it was just a wonderful experience. So that was heartwarming and sad at the same time. Vermont State Testing, as we have all done, we finished that, thank goodness. Many fewer hiccups this year than last year, so we're starting to smooth out, looks like, across the board. Our end of the year school theme is the gardening, so a couple of pictures in there, with our gardens getting started, and then Green Up Day Vermont, we were graced with the sustainability crew came to visit us, and it was our kids who get that excited about Green Up Day. And then Shadow Days, we've been doing with Windsor, we've had our first official one, where our sixth graders go over and spend some time in the afternoon there, and see the play for the high school, and we got some excitement going, and starting to make some connections. Coming up, we have our student-led outdoor day, which is pretty super exciting, with the Leader in Me stuff, our, I just want to share, they've come up with an entire day that they want to share and have, take leadership in the whole process of the day. And so it's not just outdoor play, it's just an outdoor, different stations, and lots of boring going on, that they've created themselves, and are planning to take lead in, which is pretty cool. We have students anywhere from second grade, second graders are kind of like visiting people in the club, but then there's third grade through sixth grade of students who have chosen to be there, they had to apply, and then we have our, also our elected school council that has teamed up to create this. They are going to be the refs, they're going to lead stations, they've gotten teachers excited about leading stations, so it's going to be a pretty exciting day. You are certainly welcome to come join, if you are interested, that will be on the tent. Even if you come for, you know, an hour, hang out, I think it's going to be really exciting and fun. We have Circus Shirkus coming, which is going to be a two-week artisan residency. We originally put this in place because we weren't sure what our P position was going to be like, and they came 12 years ago to Albert Bridge School, so it's about time they come back, and that's going to be essentially taking place of their specials for two weeks. World Store Exchange, we have partnered with them for the last three years, that's where a lot of the pictures that we have shared in the past have come from. This year, they're actually working with us on shelters, on building shelters outdoors, so that's a big focus this year. We have our version of Field Day, which is live action role play, or LARP, Day, and again, you're welcome to come join that, super fun. And then our sixth grade field trip, and one thing that we need to ask is, do we have permission to take the sixth graders to Boston again this year? I know in the policy, it says if we go out of state, we need permission, so we're hoping that we can get permission to take the kids who are going to go to Boston one day, and then to Ry Beach and do some, sea exploration of some creatures, in tidal pools, and then spend a day just kind of playing at the beach, enjoying each other's company. So that's an ask that maybe needs to go on to some action either at some point, I don't know. Any discussion?
I, I think we can fit that in, yeah, we have another out of the country request, so I think.
Put it right in there? Alright, nice job making a big problem. Okay, and then, just to talk a little bit about where we are with the Albert Bridge School and Windsor Middle School collaboration, just a little historical background, Windsor used to be a seven, eight kind of middle school, and a K six, and then when we moved into this middle school model, two years ago was it? Officially last year, I think. Before David left, I think. Yeah, so like, kind of that transition, we'd moved to, like, the group chose six through eight, so I've been trying to figure out how do we incorporate and support our sixth graders having the opportunities and the experiences, as well as helping them transition into Windsor with less bumps and, and more familiarity in the process. So this past year, we've been able to bring kids over those by choice who wanted to do band or theater, those were options, and so we've done those. We did the Farm to Wilderness at the beginning of the year, as kind of like a, oh wait, this is happening, let's get on it, kind of experience, so we want to be more thoughtful, and the dances have been something that we've been doing, and then we've got for Shadow Days, one just happened, and then we're going to do more. So next year, one of the things we're looking at is the possibility of having our sixth graders, they're going to be a combined five, six class, but having our sixth graders go over to Windsor for the entire afternoon, so they do their morning routines here, and then, starting with lunch recess, and they'll have what's the traditional specialist, and then the last period, which is a win time slash passion course, so that would be like some period, and that, as I understand right now, and Colleen certainly, as we move forward, can clarify, is the time when theater happens, is when band happens, so you can be in both chorus and band, or you can be in chorus and theater, so it's one way of trying not to make people choose. We are a small community, and when you take all your skilled musicians and put them in one thing, you don't have the others, so it's really one of those ways to allow them to be able to do both.
How many sixth graders do we have? Would, would we have?
Next year, we'll have four.
Okay.
We'll have four. So that's what we're looking at, and we're working on a three-year plan with Angie and Christine, Colleen, myself, on how we might want to roll this out, so next year, that's what we're thinking would be a possibility, and probably a really good start to helping our kids integrate, so it doesn't feel like these kind of like blips where our kids kind of hang together, although I will say, this last Shadow Day, the kids kind of like left us in the dust. They're like, ah, see ya. They, they made some choices, and they were, they had a blast. So we'll see what next year ha- happens to be like, but the thinking is that there's a lot of opportunity for our middle schoolers to participate over there in this kind of process, these ways that give them some agency, some experience, and some exposure to their peers, and at the same time, gives them the small learning environment and the multi-age that we've been talking so much about with our ELA and our math stuff. Alright, Windsor, I'll pass it off to you, Sergio.
Okay, sure, thanks. Well, much as Jen just said, in the many, many things going on here at ABS, there are obviously many, 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 many things going on at Windsor as well, it's a very busy end of the year, it's very exciting, there's a lot that happens sort of all at once in these next five to six weeks, and this is also the time when our team starts to look at next school year, it's when we start to build our master schedule, and start to think of some of the bigger pieces programmatically that we want to take on, and in terms of systems work as well, so that's really exciting. We've got an incredible activities committee that really takes the lead from this part of the year on, and works with our new student lighthouse team, just coming on board here in the next couple of weeks, we're excited about that, to plan our Field Day, Mountain Day, and all those things that are, that are coming up, so lots, lots of busy work. Obviously, I am transitioning at the end of this school year, so a lot of my work right now is trying to get things in place for Tracy, so that she's got a rock-solid transition, and a, a great jumping off board to launch into her tenure at Windsor, so I'm really excited about that. We've been corresponding back and forth about a couple of different things as we go forward, she's wonderful, and has been great to work with. I'm really excited, restorative practices are something that's pretty important to me, it's something that I've been a part of at many of my past schools, and it's something we started last year as a faculty team, doing some training, investing in some resources in the circle forward curriculum, and doing circle process at our faculty and department meetings. This year, we have a small group of, I guess to use Leader in Me terminology, lighthouse team folks, who really want to take restorative practices on at Windsor, and look to integrate those more fully into the work of community building, and also harm repair when things don't go well, so that group of eight is starting to work with John from the Greater Falls Justice Center, he's the same trainer who's working with Colleen in the middle school, with some of her student groups, and the hope is that our elementary folks, again, I won't be here, but our elementary folks and, and students will have that muscle memory and restorative practices and circle work, so that when they come into middle and high school, and they'll have that, that skill set. There's, there's longstanding great work around the efficacy of restorative practices for building community, and all the obvious things that come along with really strong community are, you know, less behavior, less other issues, more connectedness, more engagement, so all of those things are, are again tied to our strategic plan, but also like, really good things for, for right now, for our team, and these folks are really in it to win it, and really excited about it, so that work has begun, they had their first training two weeks ago, and they have the next one next week.
Does that eight include students and faculty, or?
For the elementary side, it's just faculty this, this time around. The hope is, and you know, Tracy would be a part of this, is to bring students into it next year, but to have a core group who have that sort of restorative practices one-on-one, so that they can, you know, take it on and help bring a student group in, likely the lighthouse team, I think that would probably make sense, but. Uh, Green Up Day was this past Friday, so if you were out and about in Windsor, you saw lots of green trash bags and lots of Windsor students roaming around the square, that was pretty cool. That was, from what I understand, a primarily high school-led effort with students, which was really cool, and I can take zero credit for any organization that happened that day, which was pretty neat, it was just kind of happening around, and high school students came over to collect their elementary charges, and, and off, off to the races they went. There was work that happened in the building, and outside the building, and around the square, so very, very cool, nice to see us get back. A long time ago, I was asked to sort of highlight things for the board, so please consider this an open invitation to our spring concert, 5:14 at 6 o'clock. If I've learned anything about Windsor concerts, it's that you probably want to get there early, because it's standing room only, every single time, which is a pretty cool thing, considering it's a pretty big theater, so looking forward to that. Our Mountain Day, which is a big Windsor tradition, will be 5:30, so the end of this month, really excited about that. We've got folks kind of going all over the place, and up onto different peaks, very cool, and I believe this will be the last time Mountain Day is in the spring. The team that runs this has asked to move it to the fall for a couple of different reasons, mostly because there's so much that happens at the end of the year, so the Mountain Day tradition will live on, it just is going to be a fall date instead of a spring date. And the last thing is just a note, and I will certainly be happy to provide more information as we get a little further on into it, but we have a team that is working on looking at our pickup routine at the end of the day at Windsor School, so if you've ever tried to come through the U at the end of the day, you know exactly what I'm talking about. We have assembled a team of our maintenance folks, teachers in the building, our SRO, Christine has been super helpful, and sort of re-looking at the way we do that, to make sure we're maximizing, obviously, first and foremost, student safety, and also flow and ease of getting folks in and out of the building, it's not such a small thing to dismiss 600 students pre-K through 12, you know, in a school in the middle of a neighborhood, so we have some engineering challenges, and I am not an engineer, but that's why I rely on people far smarter than I.
Has, has it been somewhat helpful to have those parking spaces blocked off? I know that that is one change that happens here.
Yes and no. One of the sort of core issues is like to do that really well, as most schools, a lot of schools that have a, like a live, like drop-off pickup loop, use two lanes, and to get two lanes at Windsor, you really do need to cheat those parking spaces out a little bit, and also to get emergency vehicles through, so we've had a lot of hands trying to help us figure out how to best do this best. I think what we'll likely do, what we're settling on is an interim plan to test a couple of our theories, there's going to be some repainting at Windsor on the blacktop this summer, to make sure that we have what we have when we paint, is what we want, so there's a lot of work that's going
to happen. And holes filled?
I, as far as I know, that's a good Jim Taff question, but I'm sure he's. Okay, so that's elementary school.
Alright, I'm going to speak quickly and then turn it over to Beatty. I apologize, I just came from coaching T-ball. I'm not even quite sure what all of you do for a living, but I can guarantee you that coaching T-ball is harder than my day job and your day job. Very tired. I wanted to talk about the addition a little bit, but in a little bit of a different capacity. Yes, it was a wonderful show, I went Saturday night, thrilled to see how many people were there. I don't know if you remember, but during the budget meeting, I spoke about what I think is going to tip Windsor over the edge, is going to be experiences, um, and I've been talking about that with my staff a lot, we're, we're a really good school, and we're doing a really great job of getting experiences for our kids, and that translated into our theater department, so they invited all the local schools to come watch, but what they also did, said if you can't come here, we will come to your school, we will take our show on the road, and Cornish took them up on that offer, and asked if in return, they could be audience members for their elementary play. So they left today in around noon, and they went and they performed their play, and then they sat in the audience and watched Cornish before performers, um, and they came back, the Lauren Warner came back, like, so enthused about what they did over in Cornish, and we have to get that in our elementary school, and this is Northern Lights Group, so it was just really exciting that that has translated to our theater department as well, as you can see that picture of our baseball team, they took their team to Cooperstown this year, and they played on Double Day Field against Fairhaven, so it was just another local team, but they coordinated that, and they're hoping to expand that program again next year. I do have the data on the seniors, and if Christine, you can click there and open up that next year. I'm going to update that as we have more information, I took the student names off for privacy reasons, but you can see all the schools we're going to, we have a lot of kids going to UVM, oh, sorry, I'm the worst.
It's okay, we can send you a message.
Alright, now try.
Here we go.
So we have a lot of kids, what I thought was really impressive, going to University of Vermont this year, which is really no easy feat, um, and we are just keeping up on where, what everyone's doing, where they're going, and we're going to celebrate. We're looking to change our, um, senior awards night this year, to make it more inclusive for all the things that students are doing, and as we update this sheet, we'll figure out what that's going to look like. Mr. Jeff Beatty is here with us, and he's going to talk a little bit about Leader in Me and the science fair.
Oh.
Did he know that?
I didn't know Leader in Me was on the docket.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that's why you were there originally, I could have just made that up.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm more than willing to talk about it. Yeah, Leader in Me is kind of, it's getting off to a slow start at the high school, but it's slowly being embraced. This year, we rolled out the curriculum to all nine, 12 kiddos in our swarm time. There were some issues with that, most of the lessons are geared for 20 to 40 minutes, we only had 16 minutes with them, and so teachers were struggling, trying to get the lessons done and make it meaningful and relevant to the students, but because we have that curriculum nine through 12 already in place, from my understanding, next year's swarm is going to be 30 minutes, and so that's going to be a little bit easier to really embed into the idea. I think the students are on board with it, I think the majority of the staff is on board with it, it was just a matter of finding the appropriate time to make sure that everybody, it wasn't just another worksheet to pass out, or another box to check, that they were taking the time to make it relevant for the students. And a lot of the students that I've worked with in our lighthouse team, and some of the different organizations that I've been part of, the kids are loving this idea of student voice and choice, and really taking on that leadership role, as Sergio mentioned, Green Up Day was completely run by student council, they organized it, the advisors kind of took a step back and said, what do you need from us, and really took it and ran with it. Myself, Kimberly Johnson, and Christie Keeney are going to be working with the student council, the National Honor Society, our lighthouse team, Jen Townsend's IDL group, and we're going to try and plan an alternative schedule to the start of next school year, utilizing a two-hour delay, a half-day schedule, but then planning events in those free times to really engage the students in that sense of community, really work with them at the grade level, and then at the whole school level, and so that's been a big positive coming out of this whole process. That was the work we had with Barb, it was last week, really helped us narrow down some ideas on how to bring it forward to the kids, and we're hoping that as more middle schoolers come through, and they have been part of it, that it's not going to be as cumbersome to try and get sophomores, juniors, and seniors who have never really been exposed to it before, on board with this idea of essentially character education. So that's been really exciting to work with. The other reason I'm here is our state science fair. We had nine high school students speaking about experiences compete at the state science fair at Norwich University the last weekend in March, I believe it was. Last year, there were only 16 total high school kids, this year, there were 30 high school kids of the nine students that attended, eight of them earned some type of medal scholarship recognition for that. The biggest ones are the scholarships to attend the New Hampshire Academy of Sciences, to do some type of summer research. Three of our students won the $3,000 full scholarships, one of them won the $1,500 half scholarship, and I know at least two of them are taking advantage of it, and so I'm going to ask them to kind of document and journal their experiences, to not only share it back to the board, but then also go to the peers and be like, this is, this is what it's all about, and so that's an amazing thing to happen. We also had four students who earned a $1,000 scholarship to Norwich University itself, if they are accepted and decide to attend there. One student earned the silver medal in Vermont biomedical research, which included a gift card, water bottle, and stickers. Another student won a $100 prize from the Society of In vitro Biology, and a one-year membership to that magazine, and five of our students were, won silver medals, which are the top 10% of projects at the science fair. And so again, as Kate mentioned, we do a lot of great things in the building, and it's just about getting things out and about Windsor Science Fair, and just kind of getting the word out. There was an article in the Valley News that kind of highlighted this and summarized it all, going through it, you know, the kids slog their way through it, and they hate it, but then when they look back on it and reflect on it, they realize the value of the program, so it's exciting, yeah.
So, I'm assuming you're the coach?
I'm one of the three teachers, Catherine Angwall is the lead.
Okay.
She's kind of like the chair of the science fair.
And, and is the coach position full year?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Because with the state science fair, there is the ability to qualify for the national science fair, which for the better part of the 2010 decade, we get set at least one student every year, and that usually takes place in May, and so that's why it's a full year.
For you and your team, is there any way that you could set up a meeting with me?
Sure.
I, I'd like to hear your perspective on the time requirements.
Okay.
Of what this position requires, because, and, and soon, because we're, we're getting towards a negotiation on these stipends, and I'd like to have a perspective on that.
Yeah, of course, I'd be more than happy to talk with Catherine about that, and set up a meeting to.
Okay, just, just sort of a quick.
Yeah.
Google me, question and answer, you can give me the perspective. Okay, just sort of a quick Google meet, question and answer. You can give me the perspective.
Yes.
I'd like a better idea on what sort of time commitment the high school requires versus.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So these, I was in the school and I think mid-March and I saw the posters and signs, so that was all the.
So those ones in mid-March were last year's. We just updated for this year's.
All right.
And so the eight students that participated in the state science fair, they're on the bulletin boards in the science and math room.
Excellent. Well, I think, I think this Thursday I'll be able to swing by and I'll check those out. But even just looking at last year's, I think I said this at a past meeting, but they, they were up there, you know, I have to go to yearly conferences where there are doctors and nurses and ACPs and people doing posters like that. And I mean, anything that I saw in that hallway stood up to what I see at conferences. It was done very professionally, like it was clean, it was well presented. You could follow it. I mean, it was incredibly impressive work from high school students. So I, I really appreciate you facilitating that.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome.
Tons of credit to our students just for all the hard work they put into it. It's really impressive.
Over the past, I mean, eight years since I've been working Windsor, we've worked really hard to try and, you know, create these templates for the kids to follow to make sure that it is of high quality. You know, we're lucky enough to get a burn grant. Two years ago to buy a new plotter printer. And so that really helps with everything and yeah.
Yeah.
So it's fun.
Yeah, well, that's, you clearly built the culture around it too. I mean, like you can, you can have a template and you can have a printer and all that, but the quality of the work, I mean, it just stands out.
Yeah, so some of the work that was there, the one that I was really excited about, the student, the title was "To Shell or Not to Shell: A Novel Way to Hatch Chickens." This student was trying to grow chickens outside of the shell, you know. Managed to get to day 17, which from my understanding, because I had no knowledge of this prior to it. Day 21 or 23 is usually when the chicken is viable. So they got pretty darn close. But that was the one that won the $100 gift card from the In vitro Biology group. You know, a lot of them like to do music and productivity and a lot of social science activities. One of them actually did a statistical analysis of home court advantage in the world of professional sports. Did a deep dive into statistics and, you know, really came out and said it's not really a thing. So, yeah.
That's interesting.
But it's, yeah, and I think that's the biggest thing about our science program is that the kids go into it with a preconceived idea, what they think is the answer. And then when they're all said and done, either A, they couldn't get any data and they get very frustrated with that. But at the same time, it's like, well, that's part of the whole world of science. But then when their conclusions start to go completely against what they predicted, thought, hypothesized. It's a really interesting mental gymnastics that they have to play the crap with that idea. So it's fun.
Very cool.
Yeah.
That is good because that's a life lesson.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. It was great to hear more about that. I'm really looking forward to seeing those posters.
Yeah.
That's, that's pretty impressive with the, the egg.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's so much of the egg gestation depends on that bacteria proof layer on the shell.
Saran wrap.
Yeah.
It works pretty well.
Wow.
So no, that student based her research off of a group from Japan.
Yeah.
And followed a lot of their protocol and tried to recreate their results. So.
Very cool.
Yeah.
All right. Next slide. So hiring reservations.
I'll start from the bottom. So we have found a .5 PE person in Christine Chambers who has been offered the job. We've also found a .4 music person, John Shostak, who has also been offered the position. Mary Bean is a middle level teacher, math teacher, who has opted not to come back, so she's resigned. So Colleen is working on hiring for that position.
Okay. Do we, do we have a letter to accept tonight or will that be at next meeting?
No, I, because Colleen's not here, I think she has it, so we can do it.
That's fine.
At the next meeting. Yeah, I'll make sure she brings it. Unless I have it, let me just check. Sometimes I surprise myself.
Yeah.
Look at that. I can read it too. "I hope this message finds you well. I wanted to express my deepest gratitude for the opportunity to work at Windsor Middle School as a sixth grade math and science teacher. After careful consideration, I've made the decision not to sign the letter of intent for the 24, 25 school year. I'm resigning from my position. I have come to realize that middle school teaching is not the best fit for me. I am grateful for the opportunity to work alongside such a dedicated and supportive middle school team. The relationships I have built with my colleagues are something I will truly miss as I move on to new endeavors. Please be informed that I will be completing this school year and my last day will be the final day of my contract. I will do my best to ensure smooth transition."
So she didn't sign her letter of intent, which means we don't have to.
You don't have to accept it.
Oh. Yeah. What was her subject?
She was middle school math and science. And after, and she was new. So I think after teaching middle school for a year, she's decided it's just not her jam. It takes a special person to teach middle school. Not that she's not special, but you gotta love that age level, so.
Absolutely.
Did you teach middle school?
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I couldn't teach anything else. And every middle school teacher I ever talked to, that's, we find our place, every teacher finds.
Yeah.
You know, they know exactly where they work.
So we are in, in the thick of hiring, so you'll be bringing some names.
Yeah, we're in process and we're looking to get the good. And I think once we have our letters and evidence set, we'll be able to share that.
So next month.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, my report. Of course, my SC report is linked. I'm not going to go over that again, just a couple of things that have come to light in the last couple of weeks since we met. Jim wanted me to give you an ABS generator update. So the generator, remember, we talked about it about in the fall.
Yeah, I remember it coming up.
It's going to be smaller than expected. So we were going to have to put it out front right where the parking circle is, which. At the crab apple tree. Yeah, didn't, didn't seem like the best option, but it was the only option at the time. But because it's going to be smaller, it's going to be tucked away out here before the library entrance against the building. So it'll kind of be more.
More subtle.
Yeah, so that should be happening shortly, which is great.
Yeah.
Nuclear power? Nuclear power?
Yeah.
Cold fusion. I think it goes up anywhere.
Get those kids working.
Send out that kindergarten kid to push in the uranium rod.
Cold fusion for next year. Figure that out.
These are follow ups from the last meeting. There was a question about the revenue side. I think I answered that already, but I put it in here, the state ed fund.
Yes.
Ed fund. Have not made all their quarterly payments yet, that's why.
That was in the background.
And then for high school tuition, the school's invoices by semester. Usually August, September and then January. And we bill, Weathersfield and Heartland in October, January. So twice a year. Thank you for asking those questions last time. And then I am reporting that we have some graduations coming up and you're invited to all of them, any and all of them. I know, Bill, you made a few last year, which was lovely. They do, we have three in one day this year. So we've got ABS at 9:00 AM on the 12th, then Heartland at 4:00 and then Windsor Middle School at 6:00. And then on the 7th is the high school. And Davis, you know your safe word.
Oh, yeah.
And Weathersfield on June 10th at 6:00 PM. And they will be wonderful events as they always are. So if you make it, please join. Do we know who the guest speaker is at high school yet, Jeff? Not yet. The kids pick.
It's me. Oh, it's Kate. So I removed myself and they dedicated the earbook to me, they told me today. I removed myself from doing the welcome because I don't have a lot to say in general, right? So like I can't, I can't do both. So I, in the spirit of Leader and Me, I said, pick whoever you want to do the welcome. And they picked Jesse Taft. So we taught them together in fourth grade. And I just think it's really nice in a pre-K 12 model, because I know I worked on the other side forever. And you do feel left out of the high school graduation because you're like, what's going on here? These are my kids. These are our kids. So I think it was really sweet that they went up and asked her, you know, they were so excited to ask her. So she's going to do the welcome and then I'll be the speaker.
That's very cool. Very cool. All right, that's it for us tonight.
All right.
Start presenting.
Thank you so much. We are on items for discussion. Do we, so we have integration between Windsor and ABS. Did we, did we have more to discuss on that beyond?
Yeah.
All right. I have some questions too.
Yeah.
I'm glad that other people.
Yeah, and I've thrown this out there before. As a school board, talking with the administration. I, I'd like to see us begin to consider kind of like what Jen's already doing. To take a hard look at shared resources of the two buildings and to be able to absorb any bubbles without necessarily having to expand our staff base and take care of, to take full advantage of all staff. And of course, one of the factors holding us back from that is basically transportation. So looking at, if we're able to look at some cost savings and improved instruction at the cost of increasing our transportation budget. I think that would be well worth the investigation. To be able to move students back and forth between the two buildings. Granted, I, I know transportation is expensive, but to be able to create opportunities for all of our students with the uniqueness of both buildings and the ability to absorb bubbles from either building in a way that benefits the district as a whole. I would be more than willing to increase spending on transportation. So that's my spiel.
All right. And this is, is this the three year plan you were talking about?
No, this is just what we put out currently for families. And we send that out to, so I put in my newsletter, you put in your newsletter. And then we reach out to all our incoming kindergartners that we know. We also know in the past, we've missed people because they're not clued in yet. So we put it on front porch for Windsor and West Windsor this past year.
Awesome. That essentially, my questions were really just about like how are we getting the word out? But that, it sounds like.
So there are two ways right now and we're certainly open to others.
I think one thing you'll find as you move forward with online registration and have that requirement of parents filling in all children in the household. You get that data earlier. And more consistently, because you have that as a requirement within the online registration.
In response to transportation, for, at, the high school offers ABS as a place to meet in the morning and the bus comes here to take kids to Windsor. And it's easy for ABS kids who've gone to the high school, because that's where they always came. So that's an easy thing and it might be easy to have that place at Windsor for people coming here. Instead of picking up at houses, have a central meeting place.
Yeah.
So now if kids are going from here to Windsor, even at the elementary school level, they could take the bus? They do. Okay. And so we have a bus that actually goes and picks up a big loop and then meets the Windsor bus. And then takes them back to the school. And the same thing happened on the opposite way. So at the end of the day, a Windsor bus will bring the kids and meet up with our local bus and then they'll do the drop off. So this is a full day, like this is morning enough? Yeah, yeah. So it goes from West Windsor, every West Windsor kid who goes to Windsor does not have to have transportation. But the children who do school choice currently in Windsor need to have to transport their kids here. And that's part of the original agreement when we put it out. It just happens to be that we also have all the middle school and high school kids going there. So the bus is already in place.
Right.
Right.
That's a bit of a missing piece there.
Yeah. Has there been a question to how many parents, some parents just like to drive their kids to school. Of how many parents would use that transportation if it was the other way around? I've had multiple requests. I'm just curious. In the past of parents who have their kids here. And I know three of the parents in the past had to work out certain situations so that their kid could come here. I also know we had one family who was coming here and then they had to go back to Windsor because we couldn't provide the transportation. There was too much for them.
Now, when I bring up the situation of sharing and adding transportation, that's, I remember when, at one point, there was a Windsor bubble that required the hiring of another teacher. And I know in our policy, there is language in there in which it gives the school district and administration more leeway to sign based upon need and so forth of where students would go. Of course, opening it up for choice first. But that's, that's the situation in which a, the savings of not having to hire a, an additional staff person would easily overweight adding some transportation. And if it went the other way, the transportation is already in, in place, but.
Just very, very early.
Yeah.
Yes. Our first students get picked up at 6:50.
Yeah. Which was.
For a whole hour.
Yeah, which would be Daniel would be the first person on the bus, which is why we drive them to school.
Right.
Yeah.
Which, the high school bus?
So for us, our bus, when he leaves here, he leaves here at 6:40 and he makes his first stop by 6:50. What time do they get here? 7:50. Oh, wow.
And the high school bus meets here about 7:14.
Yeah. And then they get to Windsor probably about 7:30. 7:45 probably.
Yeah.
Because there's some stops along the way. Yeah, I was just curious what that looks like. Yeah. Do the kids still get time to eat breakfast and?
Yes.
Yes. When they get here. Yep, both schools.
Yeah, both schools. Well, actually a breakfast.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, that's where the, what's it called? Beginning period, homeroom.
Morning meeting for us.
Well, there's, there's a catchy.
Breakfast after the bell.
Breakfast after the bell, yeah. Breakfast after the bell. Kids can go, even if they get here at eight.
Can get breakfast.
They grab their breakfast and bring it.
Yeah.
That's an early morning. My kid could not eat breakfast at 6:50 in the morning, you know, like waking up there at 6:30 like before she, so I'm just curious. Yeah, and thank goodness we have breakfast for everybody. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or discussion about intra-district choice?
Did you have a question?
How did you? Most of what I would have thought to ask has been asked, so you know, you can restate it, but.
The only question I have is, do we foresee like another bubble? Like is there, I know like the current second grade class was one of the, like for both, but some of the students did come here by choice, which kind of limited, they were able to go down to two teachers in Windsor. And I was just wondering, is there a foresee that happening again? I'm sure it could. I mean, small numbers, both schools, I mean, while we're small, they're still small. We're just super small. So numbers, when you're looking at data like that, it can bubble. And, and you know, my time here, we've had classes of 16, just in West Windsor, immediately followed by a class of six. Like, I mean, it's just.
Evens flows.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, Windsor's a little bigger, so it's a little less of an envelope. But it's still going to happen. It's certainly going to happen. And if we think about, even if we think about like next year, we're trying to think about this afternoon, we bring, and there's four kids next year. The following year, we're going to need a bus or two, we're going to need three vans technically to get them over there in order to do the same thing. Because it's a larger class, right? And it's going to max out the ability, a van can put five kids in it, right? So you'd have to have three vans in order to get our, not next year's, but the following year's class over to Windsor in order to do any of those afternoon things or a bus. And we still have that extra teacher in the.
They're in the budget.
They're in the budget, so we.
And we are going to utilize it because we have a huge next year's first grade, this year's kindergarten class. We also had two bubbles this last year, this current school year. Our fifth grade was very large. And we were surprised this summer by some significant amount of late kindergarten administrations that. by some significant amount of late kindergarten administrations that, that came to about a town.
Yeah.
We had, I think, eight students enroll after July fourth.
Wow.
So that class is big.
I think it was the fifth grade class that I was-
Yeah, the fifth grade class is-
Talking about him at the time when they were, I believe, second graders or even-
Could be, yeah.
Or even first grade.
And is your fifth grade is big too?
Our fifth grade is small. And two of them are from Windsor, by the way. Yeah.
Oh, good, okay.
Bill, in, in order to think forward about possibly cost savings, if there are bubble classes, I mean, we almost have to be talking about this at budget season.
Yes. But it's also, what's really difficult about it is, um, is gathering the data of the incoming students, which has always been problematic.
Yeah.
With a universal PK, I think it's improved because we're doling out money for all the PK students for the most part. But, you know, for that, looking at, you know, how many one-year-old students, how many two-year-old students are out there? And then planning forward.
And what the capacity is, right, in building for students?
Yeah.
And if you had, let's just say, you had a really small class here of, of four, is that, I mean, right now, we do multi-age. Would it ever, I'm not just asking the question, would it make sense for those four to be part of the Windsor cohort? You know what I mean?
It really depends on the, if there was a significant enough instructional benefit from it. Because multi-age groupings tend to be really successful.
Yeah. And it works here.
It, it works. But if there is a instructional need that would fit that small group better in Windsor, then.
Yeah.
I think that application would be worth investigating. You know, I'm not just talking about costs, I'm talking about instructional benefits. Especially if, say, you have a small sixth grade with really advanced math students. I, I think that would be a good example in which the, the, the math difference between those few students versus all the students in the five, six, it might be worth
Right.
pairing them up with a, a like advanced group, it's grade six or seven, so.
Didn't that kind of come up this year?
Yes. So we're looking at what to do next year because we do have a pretty wide span in our five, six in terms of their math capacity. So typically, we try to meet the kids where they are and move them at the pace that they can go. The way the new current curriculum is set, it's harder to do that because it really requires a teacher doing this thing for this amount of time. And it's really hard to do kind of those small chunks and pass them through. So we're trying to figure that out. And we have a couple of ideas moving forward, but that might be one of those situations where you say, hey, do you have a similar thing going on in Windsor? And can we partner that work together? So we're creating economy of scale essentially. So I'm not creating a math enrichment program for three kids. I might be planning it for seven kids in collaboration with somebody. So I think that kind of idea is certainly something to think about moving forward, yeah.
And that, that typically comes up with math with the advent of district-wide, wide curriculums. And I'm an advocate of district-wide curriculums because when you have teachers creating their own math curriculums, basically each math teacher is, is, is individually creating a portion of a, a K-12 curriculum, which is unrealistic. And the, I learned that the hard way. When I moved to a district-wide curriculum, I realized, huh, I guess I really wasn't teaching geometry all that much.
Well, it sounds like there's gonna be some stuff to discuss, you know, as we look at budget season next year. It seems like the common thread here is that transportation is really the major, one of the major linchpins to figure out, to get this to a more functional place. But I'm, I'm glad to see this is going out. You know, it's, it was nice to see all the numbers together and see that we do have some students and families taking advantage of it already. You know, just broadly, I mean, I think, you know, Bill said it with more clarity and detail than I could have, but you know, it, it is a way to make the best use of our resources in our district. We are, we are one district with two facilities. And I think the more that we can avail ourselves of those opportunities for, you know, for, for students, but also for our budgeting purposes, it's gonna-
Isn't, isn't this the third year we've done this?
So we're, we've had it for two years. We're in our second year, next year will be our third.
And I think the, the mantra if this comes up is basically that when, when dealing with the, the accusation of, oh, we're gonna be closing ABS, the reality is, is there's no way we could give up the space with our district-wide numbers. Windsor doesn't have the space. They're, they're kicking out the tech department because they need the space. And we just don't have the classroom space to close this building.
I remember the tour of Windsor School this year. They were subdividing classrooms for, you know, behavioral space. I mean, it's, it's clear that that, that building is at, at or near capacity. Yeah. So it makes perfect sense that we would look at Albert Bridge again. You know, it's, we're one district, we have two facilities, but you know, transportation, we need to be able to, we, we can't be passing that burden on to parents if we are going to rely on that more. And, you know, if we end up in a situation where we do need to, and I, I don't think that in the near term of this, the three-year plan or any plan we have, that's gonna happen. But we may have a situation where we need to think about like, well, are we assigning students to one place or the other?
Right.
We, we need to be able to accommodate that if we do end up there.
Yeah. Because reality, if we have any sort of minimal bump in overall population, we're gonna be out of room. That's just it. Okay.
Yep. All right, any other comments, questions? My only remaining question, I've kind of pointed this a couple of times. Is there a document associated with the three-year, three-year plan?
We just started one.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Yep, yeah, just, you know.
It's very rough.
Keep us, keep us up on that. I'd just be interested to see how that's, how that's being conceived of and what the steps are and all that.
Yeah, and I think one of the things is to think about what you guys hope for out of it. So right now, we're kind of going with what's right in front of us and how can we make the best use of it for the middle school collaboration?
Yep.
And one of the thinking kind of components that we need to get our heads around is what is the ultimate goal of it? So we want to kind of put that on you guys to give us feedback so we know better what to do with the resources. Because right now, we can say like, hey, this is a great opportunity to try this next year because we have such a small class for them to integrate over there and see what happens. But moving forward, it would be helpful to know like, if you had specific, specific purposes that's beyond like our own thinking, that would be helpful when we try to make decisions about stuff.
Yeah, it sounds like we might need to kind of like think about like vision for this specifically is what, what those kind of high-level things are. So maybe is that, is our retreat too overloaded to?
No, I think we could not.
I think that would be a really appropriate thing. We wouldn't be making any decisions around it, but I think we could have a really substantive conversation about like what our, what our vision is for, you know, integration between our two, our two buildings in this district. Cool.
How, how would the sixth grade teachers be utilized in the afternoon?
With here?
Yeah.
So they would stay here and work with the fifth grade.
Oh, of course.
Yeah. Fifth grade's still here. So they would have, technically next year, just kind of spitballing it, they would have, just like over there, they would, sixth grade would have their special. Fifth grade would have to have their special at the same time, giving the teachers their required prep. And then it would be probably for us, it would be like winning time. Because that's what they're doing over there. So it'd be the time that, you know, our special educator interventionist can work, kids can work at double dosing, all of those things that are necessary for one time, and maybe some passion project too.
Yep.
That just allows them to focus in on just the fifth grade rather than the fifth and sixth.
Good.
Anything else? Well, thanks again so much for bringing us to this and giving us a little bit more detail about how that's, how that's going. I'll be, I'll be interested to hear more. And I think we can have a good, you know, as you said, visionary conversation at our, at our retreat and start to, start to paint a, a picture of where we're going and work with you all on that. All right, so we are on to Mary McNotten. And thank you so much for hanging with us.
Thanks for inviting me.
Yeah, you can, you can come up and, and join us here. I'm gonna see you right pretty quick.
Not sure really what information you want to know. I didn't realize that you had like read out my letter and then I sent to you at the last board meeting, I saw that in your minutes or something.
I read the high level of it, but I, you know, you know a lot more than that, than I do about this and more than the letter puts out there. So I'd just be interested if anyone had questions or you wanted to kind of give the rundown about community dinners.
Windsor Community Dinner was starting in 2008, and it went all the way up until like March of 2020, which was our middle school student council got canceled at the last minute. They were all set to have it. And so originally, the program was started through Old South Church because in 2008, we were going through a recession. And it, the church at that time felt like, you know, there were a lot of people in need at that time. Since then, I think things have evolved and I was coordinating with Old South, for Old South at the time, but no, Old South is not as involved as it was. So I restarted it on my own after the pandemic. And it's a great program, it was held weekly pre-pandemic, every week for all those years at the American Legion. And when we restarted it, it was basically trying to figure out what groups that we're putting and hosting dinners on, who is available, who is out there? And a lot of things disappeared. So I started from scratch. So we went to a one-month-a-deal. And we started doing it instead of at American Legion, and we were doing it at Trinity. And so we had a whole year of that, filled the schedule, had all kinds of civic and church groups do it and fill in. And then other people on this board and who knew of it said, oh, you know, maybe the school board would want to host a dinner. And I was like, well, okay, not many people come asking, so, you know. Usually trying to track people down. So I wanted to come to you last year, but it was so late in the year. And I was doing other things and couldn't devote the time. I really wanted to push this in a different direction. I spent the last few years before the pandemic trying to change and evolve the program, to try to break down the barrier and the stigma of, you know, what it's like to come to a free meal and what does it mean in community? And we had, I had started a lot of things at the time, but then it's like starting over again. And it's very difficult to battle food security issues and stigma. I've been on many committees within Windsor, I know, many years about those kinds of issues. So it's the second year of starting it after the pandemic, and I really think there is a need, a great need in Windsor. And so I wanted to at least try to do two a month. So I have almost the schedule to do two a month for the whole next year, next 12 months. But I spoke, spoke into Davis and he said, the school board seemed like they were interested in this idea. This is an initiative that has no budget. So it boils down to whatever group hosts, like we've had the Rotary hosted last week, which was great because I met somebody from high school. I'm getting some inroads into the school, which I tried pre-pandemic, but I had difficulty doing. And we had three students and they came down for community service hours. And I was just like thrilled about that because it's an easy way for students to get some hours for community, I mean, for community service. It was so wonderful. They were great. Whenever we've had the students there, it, everybody like seeing them, they're friendly, they're, they're just, they're, they're just great. They, they always are in, in this town. So I can't say enough about them. Don't know everybody's last names, but hopefully they'll come again. And I talked it up to them and I also met Kim Gogan, the flexible coordinator you have, at a Rotary meeting, which I didn't even know she existed, she didn't know I existed. So I, she was the driving force getting those three students here. I just, she's been really talking it up since I spoke to Rotary. And we really feel confident that we can get the student council back involved. But it would be high school probably, not middle school at this point. But you have to have that inroad, you have to know somebody, you have to recruit somebody within the school system. I don't have children in the school system anymore, so it makes my job a lot harder with the pandemic that came up and made it really difficult. So I'm really hoping, I spoke to Kim this past Thursday. I said, when am I gonna even go to student council or try to do anything with school at this point? Because too much is going on. But next year, when September comes, now that we'll be in contact, I think it would be great. And I try to promote this as much as possible in Windsor. I send out PDFs and information to the churches that are involved. I send stuff to Christine to try to put up a blast through, and I don't know how even that looks anymore, to your families. Would love to get families, I encourage the students, you know, also, this is a free meal. It, it's not about need. It is about community and building relationships and getting to know your neighbor and how much, there is no other, once you know people and you meet them. And so that's really been my vision and my goal for a long time. It's just, it's very difficult. Because when you invite people or you're out and about, they tend to say, I, I don't want to take something, I don't really need it, you know, I don't want to take this and the other. And you have this whole conversation about, it's not only about that. It's, people became very isolated during the pandemic. And it's a great way to socialize. Right now, we do tend to have a lot more seniors. And that's why I would like to see families and students and just everybody of any social economic background. So that's kind of my thing. There's no budget, so every group that signs up, whether it's the Rotary, we have the rehabilitation unit from the hospital, there's, Old South Church does some dinners, St. Francis does dinners. Yes, on my schedule. Oh, Simon Pierce has a group of employees that do dinners. And that's kind of really all I have. Oh, I just picked up the Windsor High School Alumni Association's gonna do dinners. It's like I have, because I lost some people, so I have to find other people. I have a couple other items in the fire. I have a few dates open that I'm trying to fill. I'm almost done, like I said. But if you really want to get out there into the community and you really want to put something on, I think this would be a great place to do it. It means that as individuals, you're kind of gonna have to like do some cooking and setting up, serving and clean up. And you're gonna have to involve anybody you can think of to help you kind of, you know. I mean, because you're kind of a small group, so. And, and they all are pretty small, but, and you prepare a meal, lots of times it's potluck. Sometimes there's themes. It really is up to each group. I'm coordinating it, we have some like rules and how we do things, but I don't dictate what the food is, what you have to do, you know. You could decide as a group how you want to approach it, kind of thing. I mean, Christine's been part of the Rotary and is attended. I would encourage you to come. We're doing the first and third Thursdays of every month throughout the summer even. You know, just come check it out, just see what it's about.
Where, where is it?
It's at Trinity Church downstairs in, on Windsor.
Which one is Trinity?
The one next to M&amp;T Bank, right?
Yes, yes.
And part of the reason we changed the location is because Pastor Paul Volker from there was in another food security group with me and he was saying, you know, what about the community dinners? Like, what are you gonna do? When are you gonna get that started? You could use our space. And he thought, his thought was, if we did it once a month and the third Thursday of each month, the food shelf is open. So he kind of thought it might be a good way of getting people who come in and use the food shelf to also stay and be around other people and other people meet them. So that's sort of the, the reason we went there. We are totally separate because I know there is a lot of people who don't feel comfortable coming into a church, but we are not associated with the food shelf, we're not associated with the church itself. They love us, they're gracious to use the space and supply some paper products for us, which is great. When we were at Legion, we had to bring everything. We were like, just a traveling show. You had, you brought paper plates, utensils, everything. Right down, you're just washing detergent and sponges at Legion. So they offered, and so that's why I went with that. And so, yeah, I, if you have questions, it would be probably easier than me just kind of rambling because I'm not really a school student.
Well, one need I see is a lot of times, this group really struggles for, with getting in contact with the, the community. And I can see this could be- And I can see this could be a bridge to be able to have that, especially in the months between January and March. Those are the days in which we, there's lots of questions out there in the community and just very little time to touch base and to create something like this. And to, one, it's a, it's a wonderful cause and then two, it's the Windsor Mount of Scottney School District hosting it. And with your appetites and your questions and.
Right, it is a perfect opportunity because a big part of it is when you're serving and you're that hosting group, it's really great if you can kind of take the time away from that and just kind of visit and chat and whatnot. And, and if we get more people to come, that's even better. I mean, I'm all about building relationships. I've been involved in volunteer work in Windsor for a long time and I'm getting in different groups here and there. And I really believe it's all about building relationships and you do that one-on-one and in person. So I, you know, if you would like to take a date, I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight. You can talk about it. I mean, even if the dates that I have don't work for you, I said to Davis, you know, if there's a particular time or a month, I, probably the groups will be pretty flexible, you know what I mean? Then we can move things around. Right now, I could have something in August, something in March of next year. And April of next year. That's how much I've already got done, which I am extremely happy about. So, you know, I think it would just be great, but it's totally up to you guys, like I said, because it's coming out of every, whatever person hosts or the group hosts, it's coming out of their pockets. You know, and I, even the people that come to, to the dinner, some people just don't know that. They don't understand it. It's not like I advertise it. It's a free dinner for everybody. And I put out a little basket, only because I was asked to this time. It was like, well, geez, where's the basket you have? Which had donations, if you want. I don't advertise that, I'm not looking for money. And every group, whatever they get, the few bucks that are in there, they, they just give it to the food shelf anyway. So it, it's totally free, but it is coming from that group to whoever they're feeding. So, you know, sitting around, talking, chatting is a really great way to build relationships and. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, word of mouth helps too. So even if you don't want to do this, just tell people about it, like, or come down or bring a friend or it, it just would help. You know, get that word out. It's very difficult to get the word out in Windsor. There's, there's no good way to do it. You all probably know that already.
That's the challenge, it's a constant challenge. But I, you know, I think that we've established that we're, we're interested in doing it. And I, we did talk a little bit about the dates you gave us before. I think there was a February in that first, that's, I might have gotten the stat up, but.
It did.
That's okay. I think that was the one we were kind of looking at, but I do, I agree with Bill. I think that January, February, and if that, is that totally overfilled and booked up right now?
No, I mean, if you tell me you want to do something, I'll work on seeing what I can shift around. If there's a date you want to do, you don't even have to decide tonight. You can get it back to me, you know, this is almost a year away, so I'm good.
Well, when you're talking about schedule, a year away is, you know, a heartbeat away. So if I, I think anything in January, in February, if, if, if an opportunity comes up, I think that's great. Because we're, we're talking about adding a day to touch base with as many people as we can before town meeting. That's kind of.
Oh, great, that makes sense.
And, and even if we have to take a step back into, you know, to December, that's, that's another opportunity.
The schedule, Davis, and what I needed, but this is who's there right now, Carly. This doesn't mean I can't move things around, but this is, so you have a clean coffee. And you guys could decide on it, like I'm not saying, oh, just decide now and you're all committed. You don't have to do that by any means.
But what do other people think? Board members, that is.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. And I are, I have already thought what could be easy for us to do as a group because we're all over the place. I thought if we, if people came in with crock pots of chili, different kinds of chili. And, because that could be done easily instead of you do mashed potatoes and you do, you know.
Like a lamb.
But someone could do cornbread and someone could do, you know.
Salad.
Yeah, and I do a white chili.
And dessert, they like dessert.
Yeah, you would supply like cold drinks or if you wanted to have coffee or tea, desserts. And then whatever you want is, like I said, people have asked me like, what themes are like, well, I don't know. It's like, it's like, what do you guys want to come up with?
Yeah, yeah. What I have available to me is lamb and beef, mostly hamburger, but.
And you're trying to at least include some kind of protein in there. So when I'm just feeding, you know, tons of pasta, you know, everybody brought pasta or something. You know what I mean? Just kind of be conscious of that. Yeah, you could absolutely do anything like that. People bring crock pots now. I mean, and, and if somebody really was ambitious and wanted to cook, there's two ovens at the church. You can come in that day and cook if somebody really wanted to, because some groups kind of feel like that. So there's a way to keep things warm too, there's two ovens there.
Awesome.
But people bring crock pots and all that. I can answer any really minute questions as they come up when you guys are talking about it too, you know, and answer me. It's not like I don't see.
I participated before the pandemic, I done a few times.
Is there a ballpark figure of how many people?
It can be anywhere from twenty to forty. The numbers have been really sporadic this past year. There's no rhyme or reason. Even during the pre-pandemic, I was keeping track of all the numbers and you could have gone, you know, somewhere two months, you had seventy-five. Then the next, the next year you had fifty. And it's like, I have no rhyme or reason. Is it the time of year? Is it the coldest? Is it the hottest? It, it's like very difficult to tell, but if you plan on somewhere between that, the numbers seem to be that so far. Like I think we only, well, last week was the first time we did the two in the month. So I was really nervous that nobody would come because it's hard to remember the first and third Thursdays of the month. But twenty-two people came, so, and it worked out really well. And people actually stayed and chatted a little bit more, which doesn't always happen. So I don't know if we're turning a corner. I, I'm just not sure. I'm just following ahead, just put one foot in front of the other and hoping for the best.
Well, we, talking about what we've done in the past, we, we tried something this year where we had a, at AO and it was great to get together, but we didn't really have the, the showing. And so piggybacking on something like this, I think is a great option.
Yeah, I think that it's, I mean, it's.
And we kind of voted a little differently for that upcoming one because there's something we're gonna do in February that I think I'm gonna promote in a little bit different way. So maybe, you know, with all of us talking it up, when it's getting closer, that may be really helpful.
Yeah. And so basically, my idea would to, would be to commit to doing one.
Yes.
At least now. And we can fight amongst ourselves about what we want to serve because me, I want to do like lamb and roast turkey, but that's just kind of what I do.
That's what he's gonna do.
I think we'll have plenty of time for the logistics. I, I do agree though, Bill, and thank you, Mary, for doing a several rundown and really outlining all the really great work that you've done. And so again, this vision comes up again, some of the vision behind that and where it's going. I think it's incredibly important and beneficial. I believe when we spoke about this, that I think that we had talked, I think that February twentieth had been open at that time.
It might have been.
If it were at all, if you could check and see if, if Saint Francis was willing to move to the next one. Because I know that we, we do have kind of a weird narrow window this year where anything in the fall is gonna be really tough. And then getting that close to, I think the, the March is right after town meeting day, which I think is kind of awkward after an election and we'll kind of miss an opportunity to actually touch base with people at an impactful time.
That is the break, so you know.
Oh, February twentieth is?
Yeah. Oh, that's a break, oh. Yeah.
I have no problem with that. That'd be perfect.
It's actually probably a pretty good time for families who are food insecure.
Yes.
Yes, so let's, I think that was, I think that, I remember Elizabeth had said the, just the February dates in general. I don't know, Amy, if you're, if you're there, did you have any opinions, thoughts on February? You just give a thumbs up image if you, if you hear me.
I'm good with February, thanks.
Excellent, thanks, Amy. Yeah, so if you can just look into that, I mean, if, if that doesn't work, we can, we can go back to the drawing board and again, just, you know.
I'm sure I can make it work.
Yeah, okay.
Especially if ever I could, I could be there all day.
If you have a good experience, maybe you'll like, once a year, you'd actually do it. So see, that would be, I have a whole new group.
I think that that's some, what I, what I would like to do going forward is if we establish that as kind of when we do it. It might be nice to just have that be something that we can plan on year over year and have it be, I think, February, just in our, in our kind of cycle of things going on, that's actually a pretty good time to be doing it. I know it's budget season kind of, but hopefully we won't be dealing with what we dealt with this year.
And if we are dealing with it, it's a great opportunity to answer any questions.
Exactly, yeah. There's always a lot more questions for us around this time of year too. So I think just having, getting out there, you know, to your point, Bill. So yeah, let's.
If that works, okay.
Yeah, let's aim for that and you know, just, if you can just let me know our up or down. But yeah, thank you so, so much. And yeah, I know we, we got some good ideas here already. I'm sure we'll come up with something great. So yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Rebecca Royce, I saw her today and I was, because she's the one that told me last year. I'm finally on the schedule because I, I, you know, I was like, I can do this. She was like, oh, I can't believe it, so.
My only other thought I think for you all is, you know, because again, it is twenty to, twenty to forty, like that's, I think that's pretty doable for a group our size. But maybe this is something too where we can, we can see if students wanted to do some community service hours and be, kind of help out. Because I, one thing that I think is really challenging on the board is, is getting to know students and building some of those relationships. And like, this strikes me as a fantastic event to, to do that, so.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, the first is, and this maybe, I don't know, not my place to ask, but wondering if we maybe could partner with some kind of exhibit, like an art exhibit from the students or a music performance during breaks, probably harder, or like science fair stuff? Like a place where we can showcase the students at the same time?
It's interesting you say that. I don't know how that would work in this space. The space is much smaller than Legion has a big giant room. But I will say, pre-pandemic, when I was approaching people at school, I had many meetings about, geez, wouldn't some music be great? And I was twisting arms on musicians that I knew that would come in at four o'clock, this Christina, to play. And everybody loved that. And then it was like, well, what about some artwork? There's gotta be artwork at the school, you know, and the Legion's so big. And then I, so I, I met with people and there's gotta be kids there that have little bands outside of band, you know, that, because my son did, so. But it, it just didn't go far at that point in time. So I'm not saying I wouldn't give it another shot. I'm just saying at that time, it just, I couldn't get any traction with anybody. And, and the only attraction I had was the middle school student council. And that was driven by, I think, a couple of students that were just really got into community dinner, which one of them was Hudson Rainey. Every time I ran into him during the pandemic, I was, when are you gonna do this again?
He'll be very angry if we do it without him.
So, I mean, and he was there last Thursday with the Rotary, but, so I wouldn't be adverse to that. I'm just, it doesn't have a lot of room, so I'm not sure. But if somebody had an idea, I, I'm totally open to all of that kind of thing because I'd like to see stuff more integrated.
Did you have another question?
I did have one more, which is, so the food shelf, you mentioned that you partner it with the food shelf, which is the Windsor Food Shelf, the West Windsor is out in Redding, which I go to like every Thursday to pick up stuff for families. I don't know if there's a way for those West Windsor families to utilize or access the Windsor Food Shelf? I don't know.
That I don't know because I'm really not associated with the food shelf. I'm independent from them. They're just allowing us to use that part of the space where they use it. So I really don't know what the setup is there with Trinity per se.
I have friends that are part of that, we can find out.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
Go to either one because I ran into somebody who used the food shelf and they had told me they had been up here, but they also came here. So I, I just don't know what the rules are for the food shelf.
All right, so I can check in with that.
Yeah.
But I, I'd be interested in seeing the, the participation on something like this as an ongoing, not necessarily when the board does it, but maybe get the, the high school student council involved as well.
Here's where Kim comes in.
I'm glad that you met Kim.
Well, so am I. I can't tell you how much I am because it's an easy fix for kids when they're playing sport. Hey, I was telling those students, you got buddies down there, just, you know, this is free food. Just walk down from the field. It's really easy to do. So I mean, I'm really trying to push it. I got off another committee because I want to make the push here. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited.
Yeah, it's exciting stuff.
Something I'm really passionate about and.
Thank you, Mary.
So you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much and I, I'm excited to take part in that. I think that we're gonna do some really fantastic stuff.
I think it'll be fun.
Oh, yeah.
It is fun.
I remember, I, I don't think it was this, it might have been during that two thousand, I remember doing some of the Old South back in the day and they were all the super fun. So we're here to get back into it. My only question, this is coming off Jen's thing, and I don't want to go too deep on this brainstorming because we have the better part of the year to think of. But is there, is there any sort of screen in the room, like flat screen or?
Oh, well, they have some kind of a, I have never used it, but some kind of a TV that I think they do some kind of announcements when they use it for the scholarship poll for church things. But I wouldn't have any idea how, how to use it.
Maybe, you know, all, I, I'd like to go.
The logistics are.
I'll take a look at the space and maybe if there, if there's a screen there, I can, I can chat with Paul about the possibilities of, because one thing we can do fairly easily is come up with just a slideshow without having to do a lot of space prep and, and you know, live music and stuff, maybe we can like.
That's a cool thing.
We can, we can, if there's like student music or that, maybe we can record some audio and then we can easily put up, you know, a rotating slideshow of student, student activities.
Just come to a dinner, whatever, when they, they're there, just come.
I will check it out and I'll, I'll get the little end and we can, I'm sure we can figure something out.
And because, yeah, I mean, the space is much different than the Legion. The Legion, if you had even quite a few people in there, you felt like you were hardly anybody was there because it was such a big room. And this one is a lot more intimate room. It's, it's not as big as, not half as big a space. So, yeah, that would be awesome and I will check into that and I'm sure we can make that work, as I told you we would.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, Mary. Thanks for giving the shout out to Rebecca too. Rebecca really did kind of spur us.
Oh, yes.
You know, maybe she can.
She'll want to join.
Oh, yeah, it would be good to hang with the rep again. Well, thank you so much, Mary.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming here too.
His kids are home, he's happy to be here.
I think we're actually, we're at the addition right now, like the ABS. Jen, that you want us to address?
Yes, so last fall, we came to you saying that it would be really helpful to have somebody who we were looking to hire as a point six position to help support, support the multi-age with the new curriculum. Because of all the challenges, we pulled that back. But we currently have a point five place-based position that has been funded. And what we'd like to consider, talking with my staff, is we feel, because of where we are with the new curriculum and where we are with place-based, we would like to see if it's okay to shift that point five from place-based to somebody who can help support the academic needs. Because currently our staff has a lot more capacity in place-based than we did back when we started that position. And we feel like we could go through next year kind of treading water, if you will. So we won't have a lot of extra new energy because teachers have a lot on their plates, but we can feel like we're participating in place-based learning at the level we are this past year without having somebody in that position, people taking on small roles here and there to take leadership in different parts. But really supporting multi-age learning without an extra teacher is really problematic. Looking at both the skills, particularly the skills part of the LA and the math. So we're wondering, could we switch the point five place-based to a point five teacher, basically?
Here's my perspective, if, if I may, Davis.
Bill, you have a floor.
Okay.
Thanks for checking.
Things have been budgeted and, and, and things are budgeted within a certain amount. I, I think it's really important as a board to trust the administration to use that budget in the way they feel would most benefit the students, okay? And so if, if as needs shift, and that can happen quite quickly, I, I don't feel this is something the board needs to vote on necessarily. needs to vote on necessarily, but I don't think you're necessarily asking us to vote. You're just asking for basic.
Thoughts, and we want to be transparent in the process if we choose to go that way.
So my strong emotional feeling behind it is that if this is something that you feel is in the better direction for the students, I'm, I'm all for it.
Any other comments?
Bill speaks for me.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We brought it because it is the position that was cut. So we wanted to be transparent about it. That's all. It doesn't feel good to cut it and then hire it without letting the board know.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think being clear about that. Um, the, the only thing that I would add, and yeah, I think Bill, like, once again, you put it very concisely. I think particularly given the fact that we just went through the budget season that we did, um, I mean, even more so, like, yes, I want to make sure that you as an administrator and as one of our lead leaders are able to use the resources in the way that is going to best benefit our students. So I mean, absolutely, if, if you feel like place-based is in a good spot and that's a need, um, I, I have absolutely no problem with, with that resource being kind of shifted. So, yeah, and thank you. I, I, I really do appreciate that coming to us too, because transparency allays confusion, which is great. Yeah, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. She happens to have a candidate that might fit that bill as well.
Awesome. That's, that's fantastic. Yeah. Alright, so next we are on to the childcare tax, the new item D.
And you heard about it at the SU board meeting, so I don't have anything to know except it goes into effect July one.
Right.
Point four four percent tax on wages and the employer can pass off up to point one one to the employee.
And the SU board voted to completely fund that tax.
Yes.
So we're asking each board what they would like to do.
Alright, and you.
Well, aren't we funding it if we?
You are at the SU.
No, the SU, it is only funding the SU employees.
Oh, the SU employees. Oh, I see.
We have, the SU has no legal ability to force other school districts to follow suit because they are technically their employees, so.
Yep.
So it's roughly, Tina did the calculations, it's roughly forty-five thousand dollars across all four, um, entities. Yeah, so they strike that down as probably, um, it's got me twelve or thirteen, I would say.
Yeah.
I, I, as lead negotiator, I think it would be a really helpful tool when we get to that money portion, to be able to tell them that, um, the, the boards have voted to fund this completely out of pocket.
Yep.
So that any confusion about what people are actually going to get paid is not influenced by that, so.
Yes, I think, I feel that we've already had the conversation and that that's where we stand as a group.
Yep.
Has the, any other awards met?
Tomorrow, the next Tuesday.
We'll be the lead the first.
Yeah, you can.
But I can share that with the next one.
But, uh, I assume that we need to vote on it.
We do, yeah. Any, yep, and Amy?
Um, I'll make a motion that we cover it.
So, a second.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh, any discussion on the motion that we cover that cost entirely? Not pass any part of that possible one hundred percent off to our employees?
Well, I'd have to say, I just think it's the right thing to do. We're gonna add something to not take it from, uh, teacher salary.
I agree.
Okay. And I, and I agree as well. I think, uh, you know, strategically, you addressed before, that is important, but I, you know, you cap it off. It is the right thing to do. I think that, you know, we, it, it is something that we can, we can cover. And I, I, I would not feel good about passing that off to, to our teachers. They, they do an awful lot. And, uh, yeah, this is something that we can do, so. Alright, if there is no further discussion, um, I will bring this to a roll call vote, starting with Megan.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. So the motion passes and we will be, uh, covering that child tax group.
And Christine will communicate that to the other two school boards. And don't forget to tell them that you never go against the family, Michael, ever, ever.
What film is that?
Alright, so we're on that meeting. Jeff, thank you for bearing with us.
No, it's okay. Um, if I log in, am I able to share my screen just to show you some of the stuff?
I will let you do that.
Okay, awesome. So what I am coming to you to do is ask for permission to take a group of about twelve to fifteen high school students to Baja Mexico for a marine science research trip. This has kind of been something I've been wanting to do for the last five, six years. Um, my background in science, you know, again, when we talk about experiences, I had a fantastic experience when I was in college doing something very similar. With coming out of the pandemic, trying to get to travel more, um, with March Intensive, you know, trying to really create robust opportunities for these students. Um, I thought it would be an excellent opportunity to engage these students in some real life experiences. Myself and Kim Gogan have been kind of planning this. We met with a whole bunch of different organizations throughout the month of March, trying to figure out, you know, which one offered the best opportunities at the correct price to really work with our students. And we settled on this group called the Ecology Project International. They are based out of Montana, I believe. It's either Montana or Seattle, Washington, I can't remember which one. Um, but they're a not-for-profit organization where their miss, mission, um, is to get kids engaged in the act of science to kind of breed conservation for the next generation. They have a whole bunch of information on their website about what they like to do. But this here is a sample itinerary. Um, this is based on their nine-day trip. The trip that I am planning for my students would be only a seven-day trip, so it fits better within the March Intensive window. The great thing about this is it is taking place on what's called a Spirit of Santo Island, um, which is a UNESCO World Heritage Site. And so when we get to the island, the students would essentially be camping for four nights on this island. While they're engaging in authentic research around invasive species with coral reefs. Also looking at native lizard populations in the desert ecosystem, so it's kind of the best of both worlds. This trip kind of piggybacks off, off a class that I bring back to Windsor called Coastal and Marine Ecology. That was a class that I started pre-pandemic and then with schedule changes and some other stuff, it just kind of got shoved by the wayside. And so the idea is ideally, the students would take this class for a semester in the fall. And then in March, they would travel to Baja Mexico to put their kind of knowledge in action, so to speak. If it doesn't necessarily work out where they can't fit in their schedule this fall, but they can still attend the trip, then they would be first on the list to take it the following year, to kind of, you know, bring that whole thing back together. The great thing I love about this company is that they strive on getting kids to be scientists. Let me, here, this is their mission tab. And I can send you all into all this as well. Um, they do trips through, um, Baja Mexico, Costa Rica. They do stuff in Wyoming with, um, Yellowstone National Park. And so they have organizations all over the place, but their biggest thing is getting out there, getting the kids involved in the science and really working with the conservation. When they travel to Costa Rica and Baja Mexico, they also try and do a little bit of, you know, local community engagement, just to bring that cultural component to it as well. And so I'm here to say, please let me do this. It is a rather expensive trip. Um, it is about thirty-seven hundred dollars per student. Um, I have reached out to the Burn Foundation to see if they'd be willing to give us money. But Kim Gogan and I know that we're gonna be doing a whole bunch of fundraising just to try and lower the cost. So that cost doesn't prevent kids from being able to have these opportunities. And that's one of the things you see in bigger schools is that trips like this, it's no skin off anybody's back to drop thirty-seven hundred dollars. But for a lot of our kids, even coming up with the money to secure the deposit by June, for July first of two hundred and thirty-five dollars, could be a bit stressful. Um, and so we're gonna try and reduce this cost as much as possible as we go throughout the year. Um, the company does a great job helping us with fundraising. They also offer scholarships if we meet certain deadlines ahead of time to help reduce the cost. Um, because again, they're not in it for the money, they're in it for the kids to get the experience. So.
Do they need passports?
Yes, they would need passports and that would be part of the conversation. Once we have our set list of, okay, by these dates, there are certain non-negotiables that you would have to meet in terms of passports.
That's expensive too.
Yeah. And so that's one of the reasons why we're gonna be fundraising and doing all kinds of stuff to help reduce all of those costs.
I will take a motion to approve the, uh, student field trip to, the student marine science field trip to Baja Mexico. For, what was the date again? Next March?
Next March, yes.
March Intensive of?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five.
So moved by Amy.
Yep.
Second.
Second, Megan. Alright, discussion.
Kind of unrelated, but is related. Um, there is issues with a Hartford field trip. And so a Hartford field trip, mostly around medical. And so for this, I would feel, and I, I forwarded Davis and Christine the Hartford procedure and, uh, the field trip forms. I didn't, couldn't find the policy. And so I wrote Coach Christie and see if I could get it, but, um, because of a legal medical issue, they, they, they created a very strict field trip policy. And, uh, a very rigid field trip procedures. And so I think, which includes, the procedure includes steps for a out-of-country field trip. So I, I think that at the SU level, we should tackle that.
Yeah, we should.
Some, probably starting at the beginning of next full year, so to get that in place. And most of it revolves around, um, medication and making sure that's all in place.
Right, right, right.
Did they send a nurse with them, Bill? And I know on our Costa Rica trip.
They did send a nurse to Costa Rica last year.
Yeah.
In the end, she wasn't able to go.
Yeah.
But she was supposed to go.
Yeah.
She had a medical thing.
I mean, I'd be amenable to all of that. Um, we also can ask questions about what they have in terms of resources down there when we're traveling, so.
The, um, as part of the policy, a nurse is not required. But, um, basically outlining, um, either the student can self-medicate or a, a staff member is, is given the procedures and directions to medicating the student, um, as well as all of our C information, so.
Yep, I got those documents.
I actually support this field trip.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying anything against it, but I, I think in light of some pretty significant legal issues that happened at Hartford.
Yeah.
It would, uh, prove us to create a actual field trip policy and then a procedure to, to cover.
We don't have anything like that.
I don't.
No.
Yeah, but I think that brings up a good, uh, something that we should do, I think, for this one. And, and you know, talking about med handling, I've also been familiar with policies like that in institutions that I've worked at and it is definitely important, so.
But there's no reason why we can't approve this field trip and, um, work on what we need to do as a SU board.
Yep, hey, continuous improvement, right?
Yep.
Things bring up other things. Uh, any other comments or questions about this particular trip?
You're talking amazing. So will the students be able to, because you said, I heard a July first deadline, so are they, so I was just curious with that.
So I am actually having a meeting on Wednesday with any student that's interested. And I think course selections are kind of happening simultaneous this week. And so from whoever shows up on Wednesday, then we're gonna have a parent meeting explaining the situation. And then walking through all of the, you know, you need a passport, here are some of the monetary deadlines. Here are some of the things that we're gonna be doing to help with this process. And so it's just kind of one of those logistic things that will fall into place once Kim Gogan and I receive board approval to proceed forward with this.
Is there a cr- critical mass of students?
In order for both Kim Gogan and I to travel for free, we need at least twelve students. Um, if we only get about eight to ten students, then one adult can travel free. But if we want a second one, then they would have to pay some portion of the cost to get there.
Okay.
So.
Which you could fundraise for that?
Wish we could easily make work, um, or pay for ourselves out of pocket or not. Yeah, but there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to hit that twelve to fifteen mark to really make it work. I think the program itself is capped at twenty, just because of space and where it's gonna be taking place. Um, and so if we hit thirty kids that are really interested, then, you know, ideally, I'd like to turn this into an every other year trip. And so then they'd be first on the list. Next time around, we prioritize juniors and seniors this year and then go from there.
Awesome.
So.
Yeah, I, it, it sounds like an amazing opportunity. Um, I certainly don't want to delay your ability to move forward with what are a lot of logistics and planning on this. Um, and, uh, yeah, I mean, I guess just a small personal note. You know, one of my very best friends is a history teacher, uh, in Revere, I think, for years and years. And he would do, he does, I think, in the current place that he works, history-based, if it trips like this down to Costa Rica. Like he finds spots. And I mean, the, the stories that he tells about the learning, the curriculum, he's able to build around it and the, and the kind of continue that before and after in the, in the school setting. It's just incredible, incredibly impactful and valuable, so. Yeah, I, I really appreciate you pulling this all together.
Yeah.
Uh, and unless there is any further discussion, I am happy to put this to a vote.
I was gonna say, keep us posted on the fundraising.
Yeah.
Anything we can do.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Um, Kim's got a, Kim's got a head start on that.
Awesome.
You know, Kim Gogan's fantastic in that regard, so.
If you need to throw up links or, or, yeah, definitely want to help with that. Alright, I think we are ready for a vote and this time I will start with Amy. How do you vote?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I am an I as well, so you have our approval.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck. And like Megan said, keep us in the loop about how we can.
Probably the board will go free.
If I need a third chapter, right? And I'll make sure when we get back from the trip that the kids will present their experiences to you.
Love to hear about, about how it goes, students especially, so yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jeff.
That is an amazing thing for the teachers to do.
Yeah.
Alright, well, that closes up our, did we have one more?
Yes, we have another.
Do you need to approve the out-of-state Boston?
Yes, yeah, we were shoehorning in another field trip, kind of as a sub, but this is E, E point one.
There you go, yes, E point two. So sixth grade traditionally does a two-day field trip. This year they want to do Boston and then the ocean. So the goal is in Boston, they would each, we'd walk the Freedom Trail and each kid would take a spot on the Freedom Trail where they'd become the experts to teach us when we stop at, um, check out the Holocaust Memorial, which if you've never been there, is, um, it's, um, it's, it's powerful. And then, um, go to the aquarium, they're gonna study habitats and prepare, they've got a hands-on place to help them prepare for the next day. The hope was to go to the ocean, do some tidal pool exploration and some fun at the ocean.
Is it an overnight?
It's not an overnight. No, we used to do overnight nights with the Museum of Science or at the, um, the ship, wherever it is. Where they sit in the hammocks, but, um, since COVID, we haven't done that. And right now, the adult staffing isn't feeling like we're ready to take that on, so.
So it's a two-day, so they have to come home?
So we go, we do a round trip to Boston one day, get back late, the next day, not quite as long, down to the ocean and do some tidal exploration.
And just remind me, what, what cohort of students is this?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade? This is the full sixth grade in the district?
Just, um, just Albert Bridge.
Just ABS, okay.
It's a long-standing tradition. There are eight in there? Yeah, eight.
Okay. I will take a motion to approve the, uh, Albert Bridge School sixth grade Boston trip for, what is this?
For sixth grade, for the thirtieth and thirty-first.
Thirtieth and thirty-first of May.
So moved.
Amy, second.
Alright, any? All right, any discussion?
If, um, you have any students who want to contact me as a resource for their expertise, I have most. I did that, the Freedom Trails for fifteen years. And know some, um, some pretty, uh, obscure information about some of the stuff.
Did you want to come with us?
That, 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 that would be fun.
That would be.
Take a motion.
There's a button.
I've been there, done that.
You didn't hear Sergio, he said, well, take a motion to put Bill on the bus. I move.
But if you're having your students be an expert, especially if, if one chooses Old North Church, I have some really local connections and some interesting stories because of, of Old North Church and mysterious windows that were covered up for hundreds of years.
Right, well, if nobody else takes it, it will be my spot and I'll come.
Yeah, no, it sounds like a fantastic trip. Um, and I mean, I think the kind of two-day trip down there, uh, you know, it'd be cool if someday it could be an overnight again, but you can clearly make that work pretty well. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm always happy to see our school taking advantage of the fact that we are two and a half hours from Boston. I mean, Portsmouth isn't too much further, Portland, Maine, I mean, I would, you know, just love to see, there's so many, so much interesting history on the coast.
You have a hard time between Boston and sailing this round.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. Uh, any further discussion? All right, well, with that, I will, uh, take a vote. And again, I will start with Amy. How do you vote?
Aye.
All right, and Nancy and Bill?
Aye.
And Megan?
Aye.
And I am an I as well, so you have our approval, yeah? And, and just like with that trip, I, I would love to hear, maybe have some students tell us about some of the things they've learned. I mean, that would be, that'd be really, really cool. The Freedom Trail is so cool.
It is, yeah.
All right.
I didn't do it every year. I had one year, parents came in and said, I'd like to do a field trip to Mystic. And here's a check for a thousand dollars. I guess we're going to Mystic.
All right, so we are on to number seven, setting the next agenda. So is there any?
Yep, I've got, um.
Comings for us? This is our last one before the retreat.
This is your retreat, ten-third, five PM. Um, we've got board onboarding.
Yes.
How to handle staff resignations mid-year.
Yes.
Reporting to parents, uh, grades in power school. Angie's going to take care of that.
Yep.
Vision, ABS Windsor intra-district.
Yep.
And I'll have a work plan ready for April twenty-five, just as a guide for next year.
Cool. Yeah, and with this being our retreat, we're not doing any decision-making, we're just going to talk about these things and.
Yeah, the grades were more to do with, uh, graduation standards.
Yes.
Yeah.
Standards, yeah, graduation standards.
Where we're at, what's the next step you're going to take. And Angie seemed to, there's been some progress there.
That's at the high school?
High school, yeah.
And that's a Monday night?
It is a Monday night. And that's at five? It's at five, dinner will be served, we'll be in, uh, room two-ten. Are we, and we are having a meeting July first, correct? You decide that tonight or in June. Last year, we, we.
Bide the two.
We think we did have it. We had a July, the principals didn't come. It is a holiday, that's what I was going to say. They're not going to be around.
Yes.
Yeah, let's head out of town.
Yeah, we can discuss it at the, at the retreat, but my guess would be probably not.
Yeah, it's a scheduling thing, so we can figure it out offline too, so that's, yeah, we'll, we'll think about it. I, if something, let's give ourselves the time to think about it.
Yep.
Because things do come up and we may want to get together, but I, I'm leaning towards no right now, just because, you know, we don't have, have another meeting, that's.
It's hard in the summer, July.
It's tough in the summer, yeah.
It's tough. So, and our administrators have a little bit of a less strenuous schedule in the summer, which, um, is needed.
Yeah, they have to go on vacation too.
They have to, they have to recharge.
I'm also amenable, I mean, i- i- if we needed to do a summer meeting, I think it's what we did last year, that was a very brief meeting covering any business we needed to do and not put any pressure on the administrators to, to be there. I mean, I'm fine with that if that's what happens. Um, but yeah, let's, let's just keep it real to the ground on that.
So we'll talk about that at the retreat?
We can talk about it at the retreat, yeah. I, I, I think, looking around, I, I'm feeling like tentatively not July. If something really pressing comes up, I think maybe we can plan a quick one.
Sure.
Yeah, great. Um, sound good agenda. Uh, is there any need for executive session tonight?
No.
It's always good news.
I have, I love having executive sessions. Uh, fantastic. All right, well, with that, um, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and we can do a voice vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Recording.
Yep.